All right, thank you Commissioners. Today, our Public Works Director Brian Staley is here to discuss two project change orders for the large projects of 62nd Avenue and York Street Phase Two. So he's here to go through that and without further ado, I'll let him take it away.
Yeah, something to start with.
One quick question. Thank you very much. Before, I was looking at the slide deck yesterday and I got a little confused from project to project. Who the developer is, who the contractor is, or how many subcontractors there are? And which utilities are involved in some of these change orders because it involves payment between parties and I'm just not always sure who, which way things are flowing.
We can delineate that as we go through each of the projects.
Thanks, Brian.
Have to turn that flick on.
All right. So yes, to to the extent that I'm able and I have a deep bench of support team here to to help chime in with with additional details as needed on each of the projects. So the change orders that we're talking about today, we have long known they were coming. They are larger in both cases than we'd prefer them to be due to utility delays and environmental contamination issues on both projects as well, as we'll see in the slides. They they both have both components of that, utility delays from our providers and some serious environmental contamination issues that have cost the county a great deal as the projects have progressed. There we go. I I added some color coding to today's presentation by project and topic area. So the green, yellow, gray, black as we proceed to to help delineate between the two different change orders that we're navigating. I also attached to today's materials a very robust change order report that gets into the history detail process that we follow for change orders. Commissioner Henson, you specifically requested that level of detail at a previous conversation. So I want to treat that not as a page turn today because it's far too long for that, but as a reference material in the future. What do we do? What are we aspiring to do in the future? And what others do to that have helped frame up what change order means to Adams County and the state of Colorado. So diving into 62nd Avenue project first, this is the context map. It goes to Washington Street. It's neither east nor west because it crosses Broadway in the middle there. And it is unfortunately built on top of some historic landfills. And I say landfills plural because we knew about one, we didn't know about the older one that contributed to the deep costs that that you're seeing and we're asking you to approve in the change order today. This is a detailed list of all of the change orders on the project. So while you're entertaining change order five today in the amount of $5.4 million, there were four previous change orders where we either needed to add value from our contingency account on the project or they were time extensions or zero dollar change orders to refine scope on the project. I'll pause to take a breath here. Any red flags, concerns that you see in the history of change orders on this project before I proceed?
Yes. So change order two. So, okay, so who's, who's, what is, what is Adams County's role in this project? Are we doing the work or did we sub it up, contracted it up?
So this, so we we hired a contractor to design the project and a separate contractor to build the project. So we're the owners and the overseeing project manager for for the effort. And then this one is being run by Zach Dirt is our primary contractor. I don't have a robust list of the subs that they use. Steve might be able to help us out.
That's okay. So so we hired, so would would Zach? So we're the project manager or they don't have their own project manager?
They they have a project manager for their own team for various parts of the project, but we have an internal team through construction inspection that that project manager reports to. So we are the ultimate boss of the project.
Okay, so we hired somebody to do the design and then we are implementing the design and we hired Zach Dirt to?
To build it for us.
Okay, so is, does the GC, does Zach Dirt, if we add 20 days to the schedule, do they do, what is the? What is it? Isn't there a daily charge for delays that we are, do we compensate them for delays and who and? What was the cause of delay?
So we do have provisions for liquidated damages if we are causing the delay. Not so much of weather or unforeseen circumstances are causing the delay. You'll also see that costs get added to projects because traffic control remaining in place. No matter whose fault the delay might be, will still add up day over day. Steve, can you help me out on this one? What change order two, what the cause behind change order two was?
Yeah. Sit up there with you. Usually with the field adjustments, what we are seeing is when we read it to the changes for the landfill, we had to make adjustments for de-watering. When you run into a landfill, you have to treat that water. You can no longer just do water the same way. So we took money from our force accounts that we have available for when we run into things like this and pretty much moved that money into our de-watering accounts that we can address, treat that correctly.
So did we pay Zach Dirt any liquidated damages for those extra 20 days?
I I don't believe so, or or we would have seen added costs to the to the project upfront.
Wait, wait. So so there was no, like, just because it's a zero here, you're saying that 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 20 day day delay did not result in additional costs?
We we have a force account built into that so that it.
What is that word you said?
Force account.
That's our contingency account.
It's a contingency amount of money that's built in for unplanned things that pop up. You can anticipate that there's going to be a percentage of these unforeseen seen items that pop up to these projects. So it's normal to have sort of a small force account available to keep the project going. Should you run into this, you would have the money move into the appropriate account so you can track that if you're audited later to understand where that money is.
Force majeure account is what you call it or force, what's the?
Force account.
Not not related to force majeure.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, no. So it's just a contingency fund?
Yes.
And what percentage do we usually carry of contingency?
I think it changes depending on the size of the project, the area of locations, things that are located in the project.
And then the utilities, the energy utility involved on this project is Excel Energy that has been the the root cause of most of the delays that that added incurred costs or the with whom we incurred costs or because of whom we incurred costs. And also their relationship with CDOT. CDOT and Excel Energy apparently have some challenges and process between them that we found ourselves playing the mediator on. We've resolved those those points of friction on this project and hopefully for all future projects with the current team. But that was an unforeseen challenge that that came up as a result of this project and everyone found frustrating.
Excel versus who?
Excel Energy and CDOT.
On change order five, so when it says utility delays, who, so Excel was delayed in delivering their part of the work?
Excel caused, because they did not meet their commitments, they caused our contractor delays and added costs. Because they didn't, they didn't mobilize effectively, they didn't partner well with CDOT, et cetera.
So so you, so Excel caused Zach Dirt delays?
Delays.
Okay, why are we, why is, why are we paying that? Why is not Excel paying that if they have a cause of delays?
We could make a claim against Excel to try and recoup some of these costs through the legal system. But there is no, there's no provision in state law where we can go after or bill Excel Energy for.
Contract that we cover, that we that we will make whole a contractor who is delayed by an entity outside of our control?
It's because it's our project, they only have a financial relationship with us. So.
Don't they have, they have, but they have a duty to deliver. Don't they have a contract to to deliver to us on a time, on on schedule? Excel should have a con, I mean, we, they don't just show up when they want to. I mean, that they have a contract and there should be a schedule that they are committing to. So my question is, is this standard language in our contract that we are going to cover whatever delays the utility in causes the GC we hire?
We we have standard language in our contract that we we cover delays that are not the contractor's fault. And in this case, the not the contractor's fault was Excel Energy's fault or CDOT's fault.
That's insane. That's, that's not how the private sector works at all. I don't understand why the taxpayers of Adams County are covering $5 million of delays caused by Excel Energy to a general contractor.
And and I will qualify that in this case, delays were the smaller share of this of this particular change order.
Of this one, okay.
Still about $800,000 in costs that we are incurring that we shouldn't have.
So part of it is the relationship that I think is going to be helpful in this explanation is because we have a public right of way and utilities are allowed to be within the public right of way. And in a lot of cases, what we're doing with these utility companies and working with them is we're saying we want to build this brand new, beautiful roadway. And that's going to cause us to shift the location of where your existing roadway is, whether that's we're moving a power pole or gas line. So they actually have their materials that are located within the right of way. So it's not customary for us to be able to say to them, you know, you have to move it here by this time. We hope we build relationships with these folks so that we can say, I'm going to have, this is my five year CIP plan. And I'm planning on doing my construction in 2027. And we see that within our design, we have a utility conflict with a new stormwater sewer that we're putting in. And that may now create, let's say, a spacing conflict between a gas line and a storm sewer or a water line and a storm sewer or some combination conflict. So we're dictating because we are improving that right of way that we have to require relocation. And we engage with these people very early in the process, years in advance. What happens is we don't have the right to tell them, get out of my right of way by X date or else. We don't have that power.
No, I'm not talking about dictating here. I'm talking about a contractual agreement that they should be able as a utility to estimate once it's all been located, how long it would take them to do that and to because nothing would get built in the private sector if they just, if everybody just, if Excel just showed up when they wanted to. And those kinds, so I don't understand why we put ourselves at the mercy. I just, I, to me, I don't, I'm sorry. Seems like we're putting ourselves totally at their mercy with no timeline.
Well, and we are at their mercy and I'm.
It's not with Excel.
No, it's not. The contract is with our contractor who's building it, who makes the request that we are building this within our right of way and they need to move their utility. And it does happen in the private sector. I'm sure you guys have heard about the work at D E, DIA. And so it it's actually really common and that's why the relationship is so important and why we engage you guys when we feel like we're at a disadvantage. So we talked to them years in advance. They say, yes, we are going to be here and I'm going to pick on a water and sewer district. So hopefully they're not going to hold it against me here. You know, in some case, they may not have the capital at the timeframe that we're planning on doing a project. So there's a negotiation of when we can have, where they can actually afford to move their facility to accommodate our construction project. So a lot of these things are years in the making. And so we might have, to your earlier question, five different utility providers in a small section
Yes.
of right of way and say water and sanitation moves. And they're great and we, we're getting ready to start construction, but you, the gas company isn't ready. They don't have the staffing, they don't have a subcontract, they don't have something. And they tell us, I'm going to be there September 1st. But when it comes to be September 1st, they're not there. We have to try to shift our construction and our phasing work to accommodate the project to the best of our ability. But at the end of the day, we don't have anything legal. And I I say that with my pretend lawyer hat on.
Yeah, right, I hear you.
You know, I am not a lawyer. I want to say that very clearly, but we don't have a mechanism to go to them and say, you told me it was going to be September 1st and it's actually not till February the following year.
Right.
We have nothing.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right. But but why are we paying, because presumably this contractor, can they go to other? They can go work on other, like if our site, if they're not able to do the work or some of the, or all of the work on our site because we're waiting for the utility, why are we still paying them a day rate when they could be doing something on a different?
So we're not paying a day rate, but we, we do have things like.
You can use the wrong, yeah.
But we do have things like traffic control devices that have a rental charge or a, an added cost per per month or whatever. We also, every time the contractor demobilizes and remobilizes, they have expenses and securing the site and coming back out and opening it back up. So those are the sorts of things that would be included in this $800,000 on this particular project.
Right, the traffic control, that is, that's, we're not paying that to contractors. So we're, you're saying we're, so is the goal that we just pay them for during utility delays because we don't want to pay their mobilization fees?
No.
The contractor owns the site, so all the devices in the field are, do belong to them.
They could, but I'm saying if there's a long delay due to the utility, they could also demobile, they could go someplace else and work while they're unable to work on our job site. Is that true?
Yes and no. So in the case of 62nd Avenue, it's a perfect example. We were working on a section on Broadway that was identified as a higher phase that we needed to do that work. Excel could not get a permit from CDOT to be allowed to be in their right of way for us to do our boring under the road. And I'm speaking in generalities. Steve's my detail guy. So if you want to go deeper than that, I'll drag him up here and do that. But to a certain point, because Excel was not able to get a permit from CDOT, we could not work in that area. So we then shifted our project work rather than having the contractor demobilize all of their equipment, which Brian mentioned is very costly. We moved to the other end of our project and began work on that end in hopes that by the time we completed our work on the other end of the project, that we could just go back and correct it. Unfortunately, it took them how long to get their permit?
Uh, over a year.
Yeah, when we said, hey, Excel, we want to start on this end of the project, they agree. They have their people submitting their permits, but CDOT denied their permits from whatever world, which is outside of mine.
This is a really good explanation. This all makes sense. But my question is, so so CDOT won't give Excel the right of way?
Or they don't give them the permit?
The permit, sorry, go ahead, thank you. So the contractor moves to a different part of the job, obviously keep, I mean, that's.
We keep trying to work.
Do we, in a circumstance like that, are we, then what causes the change order that we're paying, we're compensating the contractor? If there is, if they're working while the delay is happening, are we still compensating them that for that delay time? That's what I'm not, that's where I'm.
No, we aren't. So we're paying them for what we're doing. Where the utility cost comes from, from that delay is say that, so do you understand the concept of potholing? So if you have a utility, you have a certain amount of time to call 811 and you do it for your homes too. Don't ever dig in your backyard without 811. I'm just personal, you know, public service notice right here, right? So those utility locates are only good for so many days. So if I call and say, hey, I have a gas line, I know there's a gas line, I probably even have the paint markings still on the ground where the gas line is. But by law, we're required or contractors required to go get that locate.
Yes.
We pay a fee for that. And then let's say we, we got our locate, we have it in there, we have the traffic control in place, we're all ready to go. And CDOT's contractor doesn't show up. I still have to pay for the traffic control that was put in place for them to be at work, even if they don't show up.
Right, no, I understand, I understand about the tra, the traffic control.
And that's where that change order comes into when you're looking, and I'm speaking again in generalities, we can go deep.
And the packet materials do have, I made sure to include every line item that we're paying for in these, in these change orders. So that's in your packet.
I've got the packet. Can you show me what you're talking about? And then you can continue. Sorry, kid. I just want to follow along. Which one? Can you point it out?
Yeah, which, where is that?
Oh, I didn't realize this computer worked with Erica's computer. I thought she did everything from hers. That's cool.
So 62nd Avenue change order number five, Zach Dirt, and change order number nine, HEI Civil for York Street.
Okay, which one are you pointing out?
So it's not part of, it's not part of this slide deck?
Not part of the slide deck, part of the packet.
It's just in the packet. Okay.
Because it is very detailed, but it'll give you a sense of exactly what we are paying for in the 5.4 million, line by line.
Well, some of that, some of that is, some of this isn't.
Change order five, Zach Dirt, that he went into.
I don't have. It's on the site that way, right? Yeah. This is the one that's got. So you had, you alluded to the fact that we could sue Excel or recover, try to recover from Excel. Where did you get that?
Claims program. So you can submit a claim that says, I feel Excel has, you know, caused this problem. I have my evidence that I want to do, but there's nothing legally blind, binding for Excel to take that claim when you submit it to them to pay it out. And there's no obligation. Now Heidi's got some big muscles and she might be able to sue them or something. But that's something where there's no real guarantee to apply through the claim program. Because again, it's not just us, right? So we can submit a claim and hope they do the right thing, but really unless we sue them and go through a court and again, I
And and even that, even that's a little questionable. There's a, there's a statute that does talk about ways you might be able to attempt to go after these utilities. And remember that they're governed by the PUC. So there's, you know, administrative processes in place. I think that's what Jan is talking about. We are not aware of anyone bringing a civil lawsuit to try and collect. We've been talking to our peers. We're clearly not the only ones in this situation, right? And many of our peer county attorneys or and city attorneys are facing similar issues with the cost overruns due to delays. But it's something that we're looking at. It's something we could certainly consider. Now, obviously there would be ramifications to that, right? Anytime you bring out big litigation, you.
Wait, 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 we'll go back to the other slide. So we did 820, what, hours of potholing?
Let's see, yeah, that's an hourly charge.
And is, you know, yeah, so did we have?
Or what period of time?
Was that 800? So was that standard for a job this size or was that, did we have to re, we, we got, we had to pay another fee because the permit ran because, okay.
So this is in addition to what was originally budgeted. I'm not sure what the original budgeted hours for the, for the project for potholing would have been, but this is just the costs incurred for potholing on this change order that was over and above the contracted amount.
So that's the 307,500, that's caused by the utility delay was that we had to re, keep renewing those permit, the potholing permits or is that what they're called? Yeah.
Poth, uh, yeah, it's just a pothole, it's a locate.
The locate. So both, so they would, there was a delay, the locate, the locate would expire, we had to do it again, so we had to incur another.
And I will qualify that some of the, some of that cost is directly related to utility delays, others because de-watering took longer. The environmental contamination issues that I'm going to do a deeper dive on in the presentation.
Okay, okay.
Think it's not a clean line.
So the potholing is where they like, do like a core into it to, and it's, it's not just on the roads, it's anywhere, right?
Around the site where we're disturbing the ground.
And and how many holes do, how much, how many hours does it take to do one pothole?
It depends. So it depends on the material that you're excavating and it depends upon the location. Because in a lot of cases, let's say it's in the middle of the travel lane, right? We're going to have to put up traffic control so they can get their potholing material in there or like equipment in there to dig that pothole. Let's say it's concrete, like maybe it's or right behind a sidewalk or something. We have to have certain steps in order to make that process safe while they're doing that work. And then there's.
The hourly rather than the per unit.
Okay, so but it's 820 hours is like
It's a lot.
Like half a year of work if somebody's doing it all day, every day.
Well, it's.
You know, there may be a team of three or four people doing, doing the work consecutively.
And and what is the timeframe in which we're looking at here of how they filled in that 820 hours? Do we know?
Thoughts? Yeah, what's the timeframe on this? So how long have we been in construction on this one?
I'm sorry.
How long have we been in construction on this project?
Uh, I believe construction started early 2023. It started, is this for 62nd?
Yeah.
Oh, early 2024. That's when it started. So.
Two years.
So a couple of years.
Now, my question though, is then now I want to know what is the total pothole that you guys budgeted?
The total amount of potholes that we've done? We can probably get that number. Where the potholing issues are inflated is where we talked about earlier. You guys were asking, okay, can we leave that area and come back? All right, so we plan these projects based off of the commitments that Excel made for our utilities and saying, we will have these things moved. That's how we come up with the number of potholes at the beginning of the project or potholing hours, how much it's going to be. When these utility companies wait till the end or in the middle of the project and we're potholing and locating their stuff to do the work we can do, we then vacate. When we have to come back to do the work, we have to pothole these things again and we have to pothole the new infrastructure that they've installed. So rather than coming through and potholing just the new infrastructure because they didn't meet their commitments upfront, we've now potholed almost every pothole three times, which is why you're seeing the inflated costs.
Does that make sense? So so we pothole before they do their job?
We're potholing as we're doing work. Once we find any sort of anything that's going to hold us up, it might be a new service line or an old service line that they didn't locate, anything like that. Once they do that, they have to come in, do their work to relocate those things, et cetera. If they didn't pull their permits to get done in the area, like we're going to move the. If they didn't pull their permits to get done in the area, like, we're gonna move the storm water as much as we can. Butt it up to that area that we don't lose our crews, we're not paying remote fees, we're gonna do as much as we can. And once we get to the point where they're holding us up. That's when we'll pull our crews out and go focus on maybe paving.
Exactly.
But ultimately, when these utility companies aren't meeting the commitments they ma- they, they give us, yeah, you have to pothole multiple times. Anytime you return to an area, whether you know that that pothole, that utility is there, it's a state requirement, you have to pothole it again. So it's, it's unfortunate that the, that's why when you hear utility delays, it's not so much that they're delaying the work. Uh, I mean, they are in a way.
Right, I get it.
They're delaying us from doing the appropriate work in that area that was planned. And now we have to come back, which is causing us multiple days. We have to do the process of potholing over again. If we stand, if we leave this area for them to do their work, plus we go, we're going here, you have an extent, now you have traffic control here, you have traffic control here. You're turning this into a larger project. And so when you hear delays, uh, and them not coming in, that's how it's feeding into these additional costs. Where you're seeing inflations for potholing, traffic control, flaggers, those kinds of things.
I, I guess my, like, what I was saying is, like. Like this change order wasn't the whole project, correct? It was just a certain period of time that happened before change order six and after change order four.
Would this have included potholing for the entire project?
So that's where you'll see in some of the change orders, when it says overrun items, like we try to use that force account to address as much as we can. Typically, that stuff is there to, if you find a manhole that was undiscovered, nobody knew about. And you need to cut that out or put a new one in, that's what we kinda have those force accounts, but we're stuck with our hands behind our back trying to utilize that money to cover things like. Potholing, dewatering, stuff like that. So that's where we're running into the overruns.
Yeah, I guess I didn't make it off the top of your head, but the date of change order four was.
The date of change order four? I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head.
I thought we were looking at change order five.
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to get to a, a time since change order.
So what I'm trying to understand is after change order four, then we had change order five. Somehow squeezed in eight hundred and twenty hours into change order five, just before change order six. But that doesn't include the number of the hours that we had to pay for potholing from our. Force account.
That's right.
So we already had other additional pothole nest needs that are not reflected in this change order. Because they were managed to be covered by our force account. So somewhere at the beginning of the project, we had a number of potholes and hours estimated. Up to this point, change orders one through four, we were able to cover the additional unanticipated potholes. Efforts through our force account. And we finally get to change order five and we have eight hundred and twenty more hours, which is a half a year of work for one. I'm, my concern is that initial estimate, my concern is who's tracking all the potholes between one and four, including one four. And then you add this.
It, it's actually different than that, Commissioner, but I, I see what you're laying out. So we have our contracted amount. I'm gonna have a hundred potholes, um, for the entire project. That's our estimate, looking at the construction design, looking at what we do for all of our pre-testing. There's a hundred potholes for the, or hours for the project that we anticipate before we ever break. Then we go and spend that. Then we go into our force account because that's our contingency. Hey, something happened, we gotta back it up. And then we go through our change order processes as we need to. And then at the end of that, we're now facing that. I think the other pieces, um, I think you're looking at it in a very linear manner. Um, but in some cases, we could have change orders that are running concurrently. So say, um, it's, uh, and Steve, correct me if I'm saying this wrong. So, um, if we can have things, so say we have, um, an issue with deo- dewatering. We might have a change order that's focusing on the time extension for the change order for the deep watering. That may have a schedule delay, but we may also have a utility delay that's running concurrently, but they aren't necessarily. It's not that you do just a chunk of time and everything's in one, it's running kinda concurrently in multiple paths. Forward. So it, just because we start, let's say, um, change order January first through January fifteenth. Change order two isn't necessarily covering January fifteenth to January thirty first. We could have a change order that started January first and runs through April first. And we can have another one that's like January fifteenth through August. They're not, um, linear in time. I think that's maybe where, um, some of them misunderstood.
I would agree. I didn't know that. So you could like almost do a Gantt chart to show, here's overall project, here's change order one. In time, here's change order two in time, here's this one, you know, and then you could have numbers associated with each one.
Yeah, and I wish we had a project schedule, cause those are, like, if you ever looked at Microsoft project. We're gonna have like ten pages of different moving lines and where they are in their ratio of the project. And so it's, it's not like one line that we're walking, we're walking a path of like fifty different lines. And that's being minimalist, I guess. Um, so it's, I think, um, the, the comparison of that it's linear in time is maybe where misconception lies. And I'm wondering how we can do better in communicating that to you all.
No, well, this, well, I mean, having this conversation is helpful, is helpful to me. Because what it said on the slide was that we were, it was, you know, like, it was three million some dollars or five or whatever the number was. You know, paid two, I thought it was paid, it looks like it was being paid to one contractor, it was laid out. So this, this, this is helpful. Still concerning, but.
What are you looking at?
Me, well, no, up, up of the, the slide towards the beginning, it just said, uh, was it change order five, wait that. We're on the slide deck, um.
Oh, and so that's, maybe I can clarify that too, cause I think that goes back to your very initial question. Um, so we are gonna have our contractor, our main, our primary general contractor, which in this case is Zach Dirk. Zach Dirk probably has five or six subcontractors that work on them that are specialized in this. There's a guy who does concrete, there is a guy who does dirt, I mean, there's a.
You're including like all the, cause like flagging and potholing were significant.
Yeah.
Were in hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, and flagging is a service that.
And those are different contractors. You've got your traffic control contractor, so I, so that's. The, the breakout of costs is helpful, it's still concerning. I mean, it's still, but, but, I mean, I mean, that, I mean, just, you know, because it's a lot of money is the concern. Uh, but this is, this conversation is.
Well, and I think that's another thing to also talk about concurrently. I may have different subcontractors working for a primary contractor, doing a similar service on different ends of the project and different. Pieces of the project. I might have to have traffic control for somebody who's doing concrete work. I might have traffic control for somebody who's working on a sewer line. I might have traffic control working for a different utility. So it's a lot of o- overlapping and moving pieces. So it isn't what traffic control, like, traffic control just for that day or just that second. Is, is that helpful?
Yeah, and the uti- and, and also, and they were utility delays, but these were, and in, in some cases, you said it was, there was a year, a one year delay. Because C dot wouldn't allow, uh, Excel into the right of way.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. See that, and, and not to people here, and I don't, and I, that makes me really angry. Because this is taxpayer money, this is time is money. And I'm getting, that, that's really not okay with, that, that's really not acceptable.
So what I'm hearing is, is that there's an increase in potholing. Potholing delay, whatever we wanna call it, but I feel like the staff and the crews have been, in the contractor. Have been efficient, that if it's not one end of the project that they can't work on because of the delay or permit. That the work still continued, not to say we're not taking a delay, but we didn't stop progress on the project overall. Is what I'm hearing.
We're, it's a shuffle, it's a shuffle of how we're putting our resources throughout.
We engage with, I'm sorry Janet, I'm just, I'm just.
Who do we engage with?
Who do we engage with at C dot when we're waiting a year for the, for a right of way access for Excel energy?
Agent that we utilize on, um, the sixty second project is Robert Williams. So he is our point person, he is the person who navigates, um, not only all of our permits from. Our contractor, but then for all utilities along that corridor as well.
Is that an employee?
An employee of C dot.
Permit, con- permit, what is it?
He's a permit agent, so, like, we have permit agents in our C E D team that kind of walk through. Every single permit with somebody, like, if they're trying to build a house or something, it's the same thing for C dot. They have a permit aid, uh, department within their group, uh, within their entire, um, organization. And that's our point person.
So then help me understand, like, at the beginning of a project like this, we knew that we would have to get. A dependency of Excel.
Yeah.
We knew that there would be a dependency of C dot. So where did we, contractor who, where did the failure occur for us to take into account? That these things happen and that there are processes, like, where did we assume that this would be a easier process?
So at the beginning of every project, we coordinate with utilities to, uh, uh. Let them know what's coming, get agreement from them on scheduling. Um, we took their word, maybe is where, where our failure came in, took their word, they would follow through on their commitments. And partner effectively with C dot to get permitting in place, just like they have to get permitting in place through Jenny's team when they're working in our right of way. Um, and they did not, so.
Is that, when you say an agreement, is it like a gentleman's agreement, a handshake? Is it an estimate? Is it a writing in agreement? Is it a M O U, an I G A?
Uh, it's none of those things because the state law does not give, give a specific provision to enter into that sort of an agreement. For utility engagement.
So you're saying that you have something in writing that says from C dot and from Excel, yes, we should be able to do this within a couple of weeks of you asking. And I can take that now to the governor, we can take those, that document to Excel and say, here, you told these guys at the beginning of the project. That this would be a three week deal, turn around, and it turned into a one year. So you have that.
We have meeting minutes when we sit down with our utilities to coordinate at the beginning of every project. C dot never signs anything that's to make a commitment to anyone because.
I, I, I think I know the answer to this, but my question is like, in our, in C E D, like, we have. A co- we make a commitment, like, if somebody submits a permit application to us, we say, we will respond in ten days, we will be approved or denied. Does C dot have anything like that? Do they make a commitment to the timeline like that?
I believe they have standards on their website that we could point to and say, this is what you, uh, sh- have committed to doing. For any applicant to a permit. Um, they would argue, I suspect, that Excel wasn't giving us what we needed to approve. Uh, so it becomes a, a finger pointing game. And Excel would say, well, they're just being difficult to work with, their, their, their expectations are unreasonable. One piece of this was Excel didn't wanna sign first and C dot didn't wanna sign first, and it took us coming to the table and saying. What are you doing here, guys? We've still got a project that needs getting done. So it's, it's a lot of rigmarole and Commissioner, it'll reach you to your point. We, we don't have an agreement with Excel, but we do have their commitment in the kickoff meeting, uh, for the projects. That this is our schedule, this is what they said they could do within our schedule. So that we could design, or design Zach Dirk's work around what, all, not just Excel, but all of the utilities committed to.
So, but we've got a hundred years of being a county, so where, what changed on these projects for the last five years? Six years, whatever it is, then that didn't exist before.
I, I think that this condition is the norm, uh, that it's always existed, that we've always paid more because. Uh, our utility partners don't operate with the same urgency that we would hope for from them.
So we can ask our staff to go back and pull the last ten, fifteen years of projects and see how much of it dealt, there have been of time and cost. From the beginning and ask, has this truly been something, or is it something that? We'll have to figure that out. That will be something I think is reasonable for us to ask is, like, why are we shocked now, but we? Were we always shocked for the last ten, twenty years? Sounds like, according to what you said, yes.
So I don't have that.
I don't know, but we can get that data, we'll get that data and that analysis, and then we'll figure out that difference. Uh, we have to, because a root cause analysis is something we have to deal with here, because we can't go back to the taxpayers. With these things happening over and over again, especially when fifteen years ago, this is kinda how other things looked, and I don't. Let, wanna believe that that's happening, but I do have a question about, like, when you have eight hundred and twenty hours of potholing and all this other stuff. Is there a drill down into item two oh three dash one five nine seven that says? This are the hours that were put on this pothole for this reason, and we had somebody approving that pothole. And do we have data showing that how many potholes had to be done t- three times? Cause that will piss off every taxpayer to hear that we are redoing things three times.
I, I don't have a quick and ready report.
I need to do it on that today.
Yeah, sure. Our construction inspectors receive pay applications for every piece of work that's done on every project. So they, they review on site, they, uh, go through every line item entered into our tracking software, which is called Masterworks. Uh, so we do have access to that information, it would take a lot to drill down to that level of detail. We have a team of some fifteen con- uh, construction inspectors that help us navigate this work across the county. For both county projects and development projects.
Well, and I think this is a good point too, to just mention, we agree with you. That we want to learn more about. How our estimating has been working and then our final. Costs at the end of projects, and so we actually intend to ask for a third party review. Of our C I P programming, just to get a sense of that and learn from it. I think that y'all have gotten a sense of how far Brian and his team are willing to go to after action some of these projects and learn on their own. But, um, we want to take that extra step to learn a bit more and see how is this comparing? As a benchmark to other experiences in the metro area and beyond.
I love that.
Julie, just a, a follow up on that, um, because it, it sounds like a fantastic plan. And a lot of this conversation that we're having right now, it's deja vu, because we had this conversation. Literally all over again in April.
And we had indicated that these were the next ones coming, that were side by side to that.
So my question then, I guess to you, Alicia.
Yeah.
Would be then, we had this conversation in April. This board had the same questions, same concerns, what have we implemented? That we are now doing differently since April?
I know that Brian has run down some of those before, but perhaps we can.
Like actually in base. You know what I mean? No, no, yeah, yeah, no, I'm talking about future steps, like, what have we implemented since April?
Since learning these things, yes.
We had this whole conversation in debrief, what have we implemented since April? That will change how we operate in these situations moving forward.
So I think first and foremost was the executive engagement, Dionne and Alicia with the representatives from Excel Energy.
Okay.
Uh, they've been relatively successful conversations, except that these projects are already down the road. Um, our next projects, when we go back out to bid, or when we go out to bid on, uh, the, the next step in our list. Is really going to be where we get an opportunity to put to the test. What, what improvements Excel has committed to.
Yeah.
Um, another thing that we identified, this comes up more on, uh, uh, fifty eighth avenue that you heard earlier this year in York Street Phase Two. Um, we have partnership agreements with water districts where we've agreed to put the bill and get reimbursed later. Not being great partners for us, and we're not gonna do that, follow that model again in the future, we're gonna be much more reserved. Uh, in the way that we engage with, with utility partners. So we're learning from where we're at this year. Um, sixty second avenue, Pico Street and York Street Phase Two will all have the same after action review that we did for fifty eighth avenue. Um, in which we can also identify themes of, we, we identified in all four projects, the same things are going wrong. Here's what, here's what we propose to do next to make sure that they don't go wrong again.
And what about the environmental, Brian, that we, because these two projects and anything happening in this area going forward, same thing. What did we implement related to environmental?
So on, on environmental review, recognizing, uh, that we need to have an overlay of hotspots for. Uh, not just historical landfills, but unforeseen historical landfills that we were instructed on specifically on sixty second avenue. Um, we're moving to a more robust upfront investment in environmental assessment. So that before we get shovels in the ground on a fifteen million project, that becomes a twenty million dollar project. Because we built, we're building it on top of a landfill. Because we built, we're building it on top of a landfill, we discovered cadmium in the soil. We can go in with open eyes and make sure that, well, before we break the ground, we need to make sure we're ready to spend that twenty million dollars.
So I think these are all great ideas and yes, we could do action um after action reviews and papers. Um at the end of the day, though, we need to change practice and we need to see a change in outcome. Because even in this project that we're looking at right now, sixty second, eight hundred thousand dollars in utility delays. That's not even looking at the environmental piece of things, right? Like, these, these are really big numbers. And so what I would like to see. For, I don't know, the end of the year or some point is, what is our action for future projects? So that we honestly can um frankly, hold this team accountable to them, right? If are we doing these things? Did did this get done, this extra step that you wanted to do, the extra environmental review? Like, if if we don't change practice, we're gonna have this same conversation again. Next year, the year after that, you know, moving forward, like we have to figure out a different way of doing this. Cause this is just not acceptable to the Adams County taxpayers, so.
It's unsustainable.
We, and it's not sustainable, so like we, whatever that looks like, we need to have a clear plan. So I guess that's my direction to you, Alicia, is like, let's get a clear plan of moving forward on these projects. What is the checklist of things that we're gonna be doing differently so that we could hold our teams accountable to them?
I think additionally, we will do those things. And additionally, um I think as a county, we're really gonna have to come to terms with what we're dealing with. In the building landscape a little bit more than perhaps we have in the past. Uh particularly in the areas that we're gonna be building, so um. Sixty second Avenue was one example where we did employ some additional environmental. Support for this project, but it still wasn't enough. Because it only supported us on the landfill we knew about and not the one we didn't. But going forward, we'll need to have a much more involved environmental program. A much more costed up estimate for environmental. And that will probably impact the number of priority projects we can have at any given time. Because in South Adams County, we're likely to continue to encounter this. And something that is nice and probably lost in the shuffle of cost easily enough. Is the fact that through these projects, we are improving the groundwater and air quality of that part of town. Each project as we go. And so when we're complete with these, conditions will be better for people who live and work there than they were when we started.
Yes. Yeah, that's that's a big lift. It's a big lift. It is.
Say on C dot and utility delays. It's important to remember what is within our locus of control and what's not. Risk management is a pricey endeavor. Uh we could say we won't break down on a, break ground on a project until utilities have completely relocated. We tried that on. Oh, I wanna say it was fifty eighth Avenue and we got, we got. A number of contractors in there, they relocated, they did everything and said, we're done. Uh only to discover that, no, they relocated it to the wrong spot and they had to come in and double their work. Um so that's, that is a risk of trying to control for everything upfront. Um we, we can try things, we can iterate. Uh but it's going to be a learning process and what worked on project A might not work on project B in five years. So I'm I'm saying we can't control the weather um ultimately.
So so you said that we're gonna do uh more of our self-analysis. After action reports and then we're also gonna have a third party. Okay, do an audit on both costs. I think there's three areas that the audit needs to happen by third parties that are not gonna be influenced by their relationship with us. Cost, project management, that includes estimation and practices and skills and everything else. And then the third contract, I'm trying to, I I'd like to understand from our attorneys. And if I hear, oh, that's just the standard, no, like, like, why would we? For a county that's the fifth largest in the state, doing this for a hundred years, okay? And it might be that it has to be that way, but that's the answer, I wanna hear from also a third party attorney who's gonna look at our contracts, okay? That's gonna tell us like, why are we entering into contracts? Knowing Brian just said that the standard for the last decades is that we were always gonna have delays with. We're always gonna have delays with utilities, it's always gonna create, why would we enter into contracts and put in provisions? Where we have to spend so much of de- on delays of de- based on dependencies that we have no control. So one of two things happened, it's like, either we shouldn't be having those contract provisions. Or we need to see if any, any contractor would work with us without those provisions.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. The second question I think is really.
Why is the first one not important too?
No, I mean, I don't think we have contract provisions that say Adams County will eat the cost for delays. I think what we have is contracts that say the contractor is not responsible for delays that are out of their control. And what I don't know is, is anybody able to retain a contractor without such a provision? And that I think is the question.
That's a fair market based kind of discussion, but my question though is like, I wanna know, like, are we using the same contract provisions on that? And I do believe that first part of the con- that is valid, which is I heard you say we have liquidated damages at times.
Doug, can you explain the liquidated? I think that that might have been a little bit confusing. Can you explain, uh it it was kind of implied that we pay liquidated damages and I don't think that that.
Nor hysterical construction contract is the contractor.
That's just part of an implication of both, yeah.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The contractor pays the liquidated damages. But yeah.
Stated a little differently earlier.
Can you explain? The concept that was put on the table today about how we are on the hook to pay for delays? Even though we have no control over those delays.
Yeah, uh so.
I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
You know the answer.
No, so I I guess um. Maybe I'm not fully understand the question, paying to who, to whom?
Our contractor.
We are paying, we should be paying, oh, in terms of increases in.
Their their costs.
So like, they have to do more traffic monitoring because of delays or they have additional expenses pot only due to delay?
So if you look at our standard contract, they agree to do a number of things. By certain dates, liquidated damages kicks in if they're not meeting the dates. And we haven't approved a delay because we do have the ability, they have the ability to come to us and say.
The data damage is where they pay us.
Yes, now, as far as increase. We don't owe them anything above that contract price unless we agreed to. So we could have to collectively between our managing it or and everyone involved or. We have outside management uh. Make a determination that for some reason we thought they were entitled to more money, but there's not, nothing automatic about.
Hence the change order, right?
Correct.
You would, you make a decision at each stage along the way, is this a fair expense the contractor's asking?
And who's determining if they needed to do, I just use the potmoly, eight hundred twenty hours.
That's our construction inspectors. They they validate the expenses as pay applications are submitted.
Every one of these lines can be like.
There's, there's pay application submittals that support every dollar that were, that are captured in those lines, yeah.
I I I.
Project management, construction management.
This doesn't make sense, like like how, we're talking about five million dollars on this one.
Well, and in that case too, Commissioner, you're right, but three point five, I think. Is the environmental excavation. A good portion on this project is specific to these environmental concerns. I mean, we do have the C dot utility delays that Brian showed here, but. The larger is definitely environmental.
And who's it, who's reviewing to make sure that they're being responsible in the environmental?
So we have an outside council uh that they're reporting to. And this is also a C D P H E and E P A action, we saw reported when we discovered uh. Contamination issues before we went to construction on this project.
And then we bring in an independent contractor that does the environmental contamination.
That talks about the environmental piece, but not the project management cost, correct?
Right, I I don't believe.
Maybe the environmental person does.
They're just submitting separate bills. So it, you're right, that that does not involve any management of the construction.
And we did discuss at length our risk related at that time when we went to this.
So we have, I don't have Tim Gablehouse on there, where is that in here?
So Tim, this is a deep dive on the environmental findings, this is a, the next topic, I just wanted to ship down to it since it came up.
That's in the three point five nine?
It is a, it is captured in the costs of the three of the, I think it's closer to four point five million in environmental. Investment that we're proposing here.
Cause even though the county attorney's office retains the outside attorneys on, we always try and. Have those costs go back to whatever project is associated with. Just for charging purposes.
On this project, uh C dot also required us to hire a third party inspector uh for their components of it. Which was a late breaking requirement not captured in the original uh, in the original contract. Um and moderately frustrating to our team. Um so here, under the, under the general provisions of the change order explanation. We had coordination issues between C dot and Excel, potmoly and traffic control expansion that we talked at length about. And then the environmental studies, uh the most recent update on that topic is. Um despite the work that the team has done in the field to mitigate the environmental contamination issues. They're still observing, our inspectors have still observed leachate issues at the site. So uh outside counsel, Tim Gablehouse is, has put together a list of next steps for us. Which is probably going to translate into additional costs uh before this project is all said and done. Questions, thoughts on on that before I move on to the next project?
Yeah, I do. It feels like we're, we're kind of like learning along the way on a lot of these things, right?
With the environmental contamination as well.
As we get into the.
And everything, like, like our interactions with utilities, our project estimates, our project planning, our management of. Like utilities or management of situations and we already know that Adams County has a hard time with some of these. Things that once you start digging, I get it, um but.
You know what Marty Farm always said?
Uh yeah, quit digging. Don't dig so deep. My concern is like, if if we have these third parties right now on this project on the environmental piece. Wouldn't it maybe behoove us to also have somebody who um is an expert in environmental construction? To also help us manage the costs of this and as opposed to, like, we need some oversight. If we're in midstream now, I don't wanna look back and say, jeez, it would have been nice for us to just tell staff in October. Let's get some environmental construction folks to come in here, give us a second set of eyes and see if we can accomplish some of these things. If if there's options to reduce some of our costs because, and I'm, you know, like you have people like. Cameron Bertrand and those guys and the Iron Women's and the other groups that do a lot of environmental stuff. To come in and say, here's, here's what you can do, you don't necessarily have to do it this most expensive way, there's might be other work. Like, I feel like it would behoove us to recognize that if we don't have some of that. We clearly don't, let's get some of that ex, let's get some of that advice and expertise in-house to help us. Top, not talk just about the stuff that Heidi said, the technical environmental piece, but also. How to do the environmental construction that meets the requirements of those.
So you don't feel like we're managing the environmental response well?
I I I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I'm not in the trenches with you guys, all I know is that. This entire presentation has been about us having to learn new things along the way and it feels like we're learning. Like we're learning, 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 which is totally what we need to do with constant improvement. My concern though is that we might need to get some, it's good time, it's like when Heidi says, I'm not an environmental lawyer, I'm gonna hire. You know, people who do this all day, every day, I'm not, you know, she may not be the employment lawyer, she, you know, but we'll get the employment lawyer, we might, you know.
I mean, in the case where we know there's a landfill.
Or even just the fact that we're at this point with these guys. We're gonna get a lot of, like, from, the lawyer's gonna tell us what to do, might not be bad if we have somebody who's, does this kind of work. Answering, helping us meet the requirements of the lawyer that says, here's some different ways we might be able to do it cost effectively. Does that make sense?
We can put together a scope, the the cost to the project will be additional delays and. And padded expenses with the primary contractor if we, if we go down this route.
Cause the primary contractor is expert in this stuff, cause.
I I believe that their subcontractor specializes in environmental response because they need to be able to appropriately de-water. Manage the solid waste materials, um I'm not sure if you got something, do you know off the top of your head, Steve?
Oh, no, I'm trying to think, I think Zach Dirt actually did do the majority of this, but I do. Yeah, they did bring somebody in to advise them on how to most efficiently do this. Uh we have to follow the C D P H E recommendation, for instance, with environmental issues, if we find the trash, we have to. The one way to dispose of it, uh we still own that, um and it's the the real cost is transport, I guess, so. Uh but those things are evaluated, we do reach out to people like Tim Gablehouse for. For information on how to best do that, he does provide us usually as a resource, somebody who's done similar work. Where we can engage in conversation, but figure out what our options are. We don't just move forward to. Getting rid of it, um and and with a blank check on it, we we converse with the contractors, we bring them in. Uh we decide what's gonna be the best possible.
We, we don't guess at anything, we're, we're very professional in how we address project sites.
Not saying is it like an owner's rep to help us, not just the subs.
So I hit Emma next.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I kinda wanna, uh I think we'll probably do for, I don't know how many slides you have left, but do for a little bit of a break. But like, I really appreciate the conversation and. At the risk of belaboring a point, I think that part of the reason we're having this conversation here is that we have a new leadership team. Who's much more interested in having consistent conversations, results oriented outcomes. And making sure that we're communicating with you, unlike, we know in talking with you that y'all are doing your best. Also, these outcomes suck. So what can we do, knowing that you're operating at max capacity, to make sure that we are doing better and improving over time? And what does it mean to have an owner's rep? What, would that save us money? What are some strategies that near peers use to help have, be more predictive about what's coming? You know, as as Janet said, we all know, call before you dig, okay, we all know that. So what do we do about that in such a large scale context? And so I appreciate this conversation and I appreciate this board being willing to dig through to try to find. Outcome oriented solutions and that's what I'm hearing from my colleagues and I don't wanna. Redig through everything we just talked about, cause I really appreciate the flow of conversation and the different ways we've been talking about it and. How do we follow up with our different utilities and what does this look like and delays, but. How do we take what y'all are already doing? And what in early investments in a project would save us money in the long run? So we're not encountering these delays and repeating work, cause I think that's what's frustrating. And some of that is due to Excel Energy, but then this becomes a regional conversation of like. Okay, as a board slash Dion, who is out learning how to, learning how to sharpen her saw on being a county manager right now at I C M A. Like, how do we work with our utilities to expedite this process? Cause these delays are really expensive and it's what contractors tell us every day, you know?
Yeah, that'll be an important conversation regionally because this is happening all over. Um this probably is a good spot to take a bit of a break because then we pivot to York Street, so maybe.
Ten?
Ten is good, I don't remember ten.
Let's do ten. Never hear for no rights, Chris speaking.
I think we're good to start.
Um so a couple more notes on sixty second avenue before we move on to the grocery base two. Um Tim Gablehouse uh has been coordinating with us and Cascade Environmental is the subcontractor. For dealing with the leachate issues on site.
Can you say that? Who's the subcontract you're saying?
Cascade Environmental.
And are they, who are they working for? Cascade Environmental. Working, who's paying their?
Their subcontractor to our prime factor.
So they're working for Zach. Sub to Zach.
But they were hired by Tim Gablehouse, who is a consultant for the county attorney's office.
Right. Record referred. And I'm saying. That I trust somebody who gives you guys the advice, not subcontract. That's what, but I do think we trust Tim Gablehouse, right? So it's like, there's this like triangulation. But I wanna clarify, like, I think sometimes it, it covers your, when you say, I'm gonna bring in an expert that's gonna do it and then. They go through it like a, an owner dressed and says, yes, yes, these are all make sense or. They could push back and all that, especially when it's that deep environment, you know, like expertise, it wasn't. That's what I'm saying, it's like, it makes sense. Somebody's there to talk, not just about the technical expertise of what can be done. But all the different ways that it can be done in a, in the environment of construction.
In this particular case, that subcontractor. Brian's team and with. Right, Steve, with your Steve part of this conversations and then Tim Gablehouse, our outside counsel. Is working directly with C P H E on those recommendations as well. Because we also have to make sure whatever we're doing is gonna satisfy the state.
Only makes sense that their focus is not, is on compliance.
Yes.
Not efficiency and cost. Having somebody there to help with that other piece that worked for us. Works for Brian is what I'm asking for us to consider.
And work to be done. I alluded to this earlier. Additional excavation, figuring out exactly where the leachate is coming from, uh removing. Removing, de-watering, sealing the site to uh to ensure that. The neighborhood is dealing with uh. Contaminant from the ground seeping up onto the surface, which is a problem for everyone. Um so we will. See what comes next. We'll keep you all closely informed and I will continue the conversation with Alicia and Dion about. What does a owner's rep contractor look like to? Further facilitate efficiency in this uh prospect as well as uh compliance. Um oh, and one last note on sixty second avenue, uh. I didn't get it into the slide deck, but the starting point for this change order in the spirit of in a negotiation, everyone leaves unhappy and that's how you know you're successful. Uh they started with a se- about a seven million dollar ask, uh and through negotiations, reorganization of the project. Is how we got down to that five point four million. So just wanted to leave that note to y'all as well. So York Street Phase Two, um it's the, is the next challenging project, a slightly smaller change order. Uh this is York Street between seventy eighth Avenue and eighty eighth Avenue. Phase one was seventy fourth to seventy eighth and then someday in the future, we will deal with south of seventy fourth avenue, which is state highway two twenty four. Uh this has a longer and more storied change order history, um. With a number of zero dollar change orders, administrative change orders, uh whereas the project started getting. Uh a little more challenging for the county was around change order five. This was twenty twenty three, I wanna say, maybe four, summer of twenty three. Uh the contractor reported illegal dumping at the site and they actually captured the. License plate and ID of, of uh the illegal, one of the illegal dumpers. Uh but it created a big problem for us, uh to the tune in the first change order of one point two million. Uh a further two point six down the line. Um and then today, an additional two hundred and fifty K to really close out the. Illegal dumping and contaminated materials uh that impacted our site. Uh third party reclamation of those expenses is, is pending uh with the county, county attorney's office. Because we do have a culprit, uh maybe not the only culprit in mind, but. Uh there could be more to come in how we reclaim uh reclaim those expenses over time.
That's a, that's not a question for us to talk about the details here, is it Heidi?
The majority of this change order is the inverse of the last related to utility delays, so two hundred and fifty K. Uh approximately in, in closing out the environmental issues, the remainder of the change order. Associated with those utility delays. We really struggled on this one. With the subcontractor that Excel Energy hired on the site. They partnered with us well to find solutions, hold their account, their subcontractor accountable over time. Um it's been a challenge, um and a costly challenge at that.
Who is it? Who is the G C? Who's the sub?
Uh G C is H E I, uh civil and the sub is.
And we, we've been having trouble with H E I the entire time, haven't we?
Um we have challenges with H E I um when it comes to communication. I think at times um they could be better. Um we, um I'm not sure how, how far into depth there, no, no, we can't.
Uh but we are, we're tracking issues that we have with this contractor and working with purchasing to ensure that. Uh, but we are, we're tracking issues that we have with this contractor and working with purchasing to ensure that. Accountability is held, uh. We're documenting well.
I'm gonna take that as a, we're on it, we're aware of those issues, communication. We heard of there's wage issues out there, there's other. Ethical issues, you guys are gonna follow.
That we're documenting, yes.
So on this change order, the utility delays were largely related to unmarked and poorly located utility assets. We ended up cutting, uh. The the cons line and gas line to the assumption church at one point. Because they just, there was no documentation of those lines existing. Um, so improvements that came out of this project are better documentation of utilities at the site and. And recognizing. Recognizing the risks, recognizing the challenges that go into, uh. Working on major projects in historic neighborhoods with lots of. Lots of abandoned or even active, but not well, not well located utilities. The subcontractor not showing up. Showing up and doing some standard work. All of those things that we've been working directly with with Excel Energy on. Are things that we hopefully want to repeat some in the future, uh, and we are in the home stretch on this project, we're, uh. We're, we're feeling good about the closeout. And unlike on sixty second Avenue, where there may be a few traditional charges for the project. This is the last change order that we're expecting from York Street is to uh, to close out the project entirely. Did I say that well, Steve?
Yep.
Um, getting into those illegal dumping issues, um. Change orders, uh, five, seven, and nine have pieces of the, uh, total costs. I will add the caveat that I didn't capture on this slide. The, there were some material changes captured in change order seven, so not the entire two point six million isn't all related to environmental, but most of it is.
I wanna make sure, am I understanding this right? So on slide ten, change order nine is. Over three million dollars and then. What's the, what's represented on change order nine on slide thirteen at two hundred and fifty thousand?
Uh, so two hundred and fifty thousand of that three point three million is related to environmental contamination issues.
Oh, I see, so you're just breaking out that of the, of change order nine. Two hundred and fifty thousand was strictly environmental, oh, okay, thank you, okay.
Of that three million, two hundred and fifty was from this piece, the rest was something else.
Yeah, the rest was utility delays, that's poehling.
Thank you.
Remobilization, all of the things we talked about in the first.
Since that was a different change order, since Janet said you can have multiple at the same time and maybe track them more to the root cause problem.
It's.
Possible.
Yeah.
If you're involved.
Relatively minor effort, just an additional administrative function.
My name, Steve, what'd you say?
So like. Here we've got a couple of these change orders that have. Overlapping, which is some expected, some uh, overlapping, like, uh, change order nine includes two hundred and fifty thousand, that is related to the illegal dumping. The fact that these are not, don't always have to be linear in nature. Sequential. Like Janet says, it could have some that are concurrent. Maybe makes sense, say, we're gonna have a change order that tracks the illegal dumping issue, tracks the. Or, you know, G C work, it might be the, uh, you know, you break it down into issues and then you, it'll be easier to say. This problem resulted in change order eight, you know? Or, you know, I mean, like, break it down, so like, change order nine. Includes both illegal dumping as well as utility, remember the pie chart? And I'm saying separate, separate those out into different, separate track and change orders so we can. Track the cost of each problem. Makes sense, you asked me to repeat.
Yes, it makes sense, I mean.
I mean, yes, it makes sense. I don't mean to be really snarky. But this is gonna come out this way, but. I'm all for accountability, but when I'm out counting the pavement, when we all run for office. I'm not. So far into the weeds of how change orders are created, I feel like that's a process. Question that's gonna net the same end result in paperwork, rather than having, what I'm hearing, one report of a change order. Now we want two reports identifying environmental and administrative.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Or utility.
I think, I was gonna say, the one caution I would say of just maintaining one change order. And why we do them kind of over time and definitely the flexibility is we do wanna make sure that we're paying our contractors subcontractors. So in the case of like this one starting in twenty twenty three, I don't wanna necessarily hold or withdraw payment. For two years while we're figuring it out, so it, even if we do kind of have. Let's say we call him change order five A, change order. Seven A, change order nine A, that helps maybe track, track an issue or how we associate that. We're gonna have multiple change orders one way or another, because we can't wait till a project begins in year one and not pay out till year three. We won't.
That totally makes sense.
Into contractor, so I just wanna throw that caveat on there. There's a lot of ways that, I mean, uh, I'm not sure, uh, you guys shouted out Dennis out here, he's one of our construction inspectors for our department. Supervisors and, um, he, you know, he's in the weeds with some of these numbers. And so how we track and group is something that we can work with to be a little bit, um, more. Transparent with you all, um, to be helpful, but I will tell you, it's, it's still gonna be a challenge just based off of volume of what we track.
That makes sense, actually, you could say. Change order seven, change order eight, change order nine, but we have a category for this environmental thing, I like that. As long as we can track the issues.
So, I guess before I move off of York Street Phase Two, any more discussion questions about what's being proposed on this one?
That's tight.
Um, and then change order process, the, this is the comprehensive report that I put together on. Why we do change orders, what they are, where they come from, what those compliance with state and federal requirements look like. And, uh, uh, accounting and budgeting best practices. I really want to stress that change orders. Make our projects better, uh, if we tried to estimate everything upfront and then when we ran into problems, just said, well, just don't do it because. Uh, we don't care about the, the end quality, we just want you to do what's in the original scope. That's not serving our residents well, so it's. It's. Important, I think, to Commissioner Doricio's point and all of yours that. We do a better job as a department of reporting historically. Starting points and ending points. When the change orders incur costs and why, uh, but I think that having a process in place is both. Industry best practice, but makes sure that we're getting the best value from our, from our contracts for our residents. Then, uh, the report gets into this process, the. Uh, it's, you know, clear as mud, um, in how we navigate change orders. The orange process through the center is the big, big challenging one, where there's an additive change order on a large process that involves the board. Our administrative or zero dollar time addition change orders are much more straightforward processes. Um, but you can, you can dig deep into that in the report if you have an interest in for future reference. Then finally, um, these are the total numbers. I will say here that budget and finance has helped us identify some underspends in current budget year paired with, uh. Uh, a additional available fund balance in the road and bridge fund. To make sure that with these change orders, we're not going down below our fifteen million dollar contingency threshold. But it's going to be close, um. We, we're being very attentive to how we're spending money and how we're, uh, pacing projects for tomorrow's discussion moving forward. So that we're not, that we're living within our means and responsibly utilizing the road and bridge fund without imperiling it. So any, any questions or final wrap ups, uh, with the question on the table being, are we okay to advance these to public hearing next week?
What would happen if we just said no?
We'd have to go back to the contractors and say. The, the board found these unacceptable for the following reasons and, uh, and see if there's any, any other contingencies. Uh, but this is. This is, that would put us. In bad shape, both reputationally and for future projects. And imperil our relationships with current contracts, uh, where we might get, might get. Find ourselves in litigation.
And I think another thing, um, to keep in mind, you guys are very principled in your stance on, um. Doing the right thing when it comes to environmental issues and not just. Weeping it under the rug, you guys have stand, stood up, but on a federal level to have. Um, local polluters held accountable. If, I think it would be against your principles to say, no, we don't care that there are these. Environmental contaminations and we're just gonna cover it up with paint, we can not do the right thing. I feel like the neighborhoods in York Street Phase Two would be completely disheartened as a community. And, um, I feel like, um, it's one of the things that I take a lot of pride in working with you all. Is that you do do the right thing, it's not an easy path, very expensive, but it's the right path. And I think, um, I don't see you all as being people who would turn your back when we have, um, did you go through the slides of the pictures? Of what we're seeing out there, there's, there's a packet.
In your packet.
There's a packet that just shows you the level of contamination and trash removal that we did for sixty second Avenue. And with you seeing that and just turning your cheek, I, I just don't. In my experience with you all as a board, I just don't see you all not taking a principled stance.
I didn't get that this was. It's all about just the environmental piece, that was interesting. That was the argument, but.
I mean, it's a considerable amount, if you look at Brian's slide, I'm sorry, scrolling through here. Just on York Street Phase Two. We're spending four million dollars just on environmental. Right, if you scrolled up, I, I'm sure, knowing Brian, I don't have it in the slides memorized, I'm sure if you went and looked at. Uh, the cost comparison of what we're spending on environmental versus utility delays. Yeah, it's eighty five percent of what we're asking for, for the change order is environmental issues. So, I mean, so just to answer your question of why, why don't we just say no, it's because it's not who you guys are, I mean, or at least my perspective of you.
Um, I have a. I, I was, I was looking at the packet last night, and I'm sorry it took me a long time to find it, because of course I left my pad, my note with my questions. So, this is random, but I just, because, because I'm not sure, a lot of this conversation has been so helpful to me, thank you very much. On slide fifty one, there's an, it says added item lump sum. It makes me, so I don't know what that is, it's not the end of the world, it's seventy thousand dollars, I'm just saying that would, I was like, I don't know what that, what that is, but. So it's just, I mean, and I'm sure, I don't know what that is, but anyway, I'm just flagging that. Point being. Again, this conversation has been really helpful and I totally understand from the pictures and we don't, we don't know what we're gonna find. In South Adams County, I, and maybe this is, I don't know, the historic layer to this whole, you know, like. Survey inventory of. You know, we knew there were, where, where, where one landfill was, but that, we didn't know where the other one was, I don't, and I have no idea what the record keeping looks like for that, I don't know if anybody, I, I, I'm not saying that. Oh, we should have known. Point is, these surprises will keep happening, I know the environmental stuff is gonna be there, but. These are. Especially now, we've all been through our budget process this year, which we're hoping to wrap up soon. And a lot of this on the one was environmental cleanup, but these are big impacts to our. Obviously, to all the work that we are asking you and all the wrangling we're doing over. Our, our prioritizing our projects, and so I think it's, I think that today has been helpful, I think. Picking up from where we were in April, so I think some, we've agreed on. Uh, in, looking at getting an environmental, you know, somebody, if we could, how we can smooth anything out, because time is money, you know, so, an environmental. The agent.
Owner's rep.
Yeah, owner's rep, okay, um, audit, third party audit. Of what, of, of, how, of what processes and finances or what, or both of those, all of that. Um, what else, what, what was on that we?
We were talking about memo of future actions.
Okay. So, so we've got some really good action steps.
Yes, I did pull all the actions, so I'll share those.
Thank you, and that, I, I feel better about that, I'm, I know nobody loves that, that these are the numbers we're looking at, but. It just becomes all more critical to shave off, edit these wherever we can going forward because of our current budget realities. And I say current, but we don't know how long it's gonna be like this, so. You know, and we just wanna do more with our taxpayer dollars, uh, to help get the improvements that we need, so. So, so thank you very much for the presentation and the conversation today, it's been, it's been helpful and, uh, please excuse my misconceptions at the beginning of the conversation. The slide, the slides, I thought I understood the slides clearly, I had some, I, I misinterpreted some of them.
I think a lot of your guys' questions gave us, um, where we were. Approaching things from different perspectives, so your questions helped us communicate what we're seeing from our side. And I think like Commissioner Odericio's, um, concept of change orders and how those are implemented, just it's setting us up to not. We're, we're not speaking the same language, so I know it may feel uncomfortable to ask the questions that you guys are asking of us, it's sometimes. Sometimes we, um, do take a defensive stance because we care deeply. But, um, I think at the end of the day, um. That's what study sessions are for, right, is to make sure we are speaking the same language, the same terminology. And trying to come to some resolution so that we can be accountable to the taxpayer dollars. And that we're innovating in the right places and that we're promoting good work. Um, you know, one of the things Brian always kind, uh, tries to remind me when I'm getting sassy on a bad day is, um. People don't come to work with negative intent. Nobody wakes up in the morning and goes, I'm gonna go do a bad job today, you know, and so he gives me that reminder of. Um, there are situations that are opposite of that, we're experiencing that with a little bit of a security threat today, but. Um, the reality is, is we wanna do a good job for you all, we wanna do a good job for the residents. And, um, that's why we are here, I, I, I can say. Brian's a very talented engineer, I'm sure he can make bank working somewhere else. And honestly, I probably could too, but we love this community, care for this community, and we wanna see it succeed. That's why we're here, that's why I drive an hour fifteen minutes to get here every day. So, um, I appreciate, even though maybe uncomfortable to ask the hard questions. It's helping us understand why you aren't understanding what we're saying, or you're, or, or we're not understanding what you're asking, so.
And I, I do want to reinforce that we're, we're earnest, we appreciate the hard questions and we're here for it because it makes us better. I'm sorry, Commissioner Melikai spoke over me.
Just wrapping up here, so, um, I think, yes, hard conversation today. Adding up the numbers, we are now over nine million dollars in change orders that we approved this year, which is very painful for everybody in this room. So, moving forward, um, couple of the next steps, just, I wanna outline them just so that they're clear for, um. Uh, every, everybody, um. Couple of the next steps that we wanna see, environmental owners rep, what does that look like in, um, adding that into our process? Um, performance audit and project management. Financial audit, and then the legal contract audit, um, that we talked to Heidi about just a little bit ago, so. I think moving, and there's probably more outcomes that you got, Alicia, in the conversation, so feel free to just.
Yeah, what were those?
I'm gonna send them around.
Send them, send them to all of us, but at least we identified four that we wanna do moving forward. Um, because we, we have to be better, I don't think that there's an opportunity to fail. In this, honestly, because it's, I appreciate that you wanna make us happy, it has nothing to do with us. It has to do with the Adams County taxpayers, and that's all that we're here for. Um, and at the end of the day, that's really the only thing that matters, um, and so we need to do our due diligence to make sure that their money. Is spent in, in a trusted way, um, and so if anything, that's, that's the most important takeaway from today's conversation. Um, but wanted to. Wrap up with those, uh, four next steps and Alicia, if you have others, please circle them back to the team, I'd appreciate it. Uh, but thank you all for the engaging and the hard conversation, it was tough, but you hung in there, thanks. Great job.
Thanks, guys.
And well. Keeps going off, I'll just project, uh, while I am up here, a late breaking twenty four hour turnaround, uh. Uh. Trying to share the right screen for posterity here.
You got this, Brian.
You got it, buddy.
Own that email. You got it.
So I guess I'm, I'm jumping the, jumping the gun and taking the microphone from you. Do you want me to dive into this? So I, I two seventy, uh, DEIS is coming up. Um, tomorrow, the signing ceremony, um, at the request of uh. Uh, C dot staff, uh, we put together a uh. Uh, communication group, newsletter support for the DEIS program and the project as a whole. And wanted to get your feedback, any edits before uh, before we ask Commissioner Baca to sign on behalf of the board.
No.
Did you guys wanna say anything about extending the date?
We want the, the comment period to go to extend. Yeah, definitely past the holiday.
No more than sixty, which is what was offered by Green Latinos.
Okay.
That would be my. How fair is that? Like cabinet.
Well, forty-five days lands on January second. So we're adding fifteen days to that.
In in my conversations. Yeah, in my conversations with. Um, they're committed to extending the timeframe. I think the big thing is we don't wanna lose momentum and that's why. That's the big thing. We're starting the official comment period by the signing and we just wanna keep things moving forward. We have to move to see um, the alternative analysis that Green Latinos is doing. Because we're open to other perspectives. Um, and that's what we've been communicating um, in our staff interaction with C dot staff.
So, I just have a concern over, I mean, and of both the, I think it's real and also the optics. It's a real iss- issue and the optics of having a comment period fall basically over. The busiest holiday weeks of the year. It's just the way the timing landed. It's not intentional. But so if they would add two weeks into, what is it, or fifteen days, whatever, two weeks, fourteen days, whatever, into January, I think that would be. Appreciated and that's so, and you said that she's willing that they're.
They're willing.
So you're confident in Jessica?
And it doesn't need to be stated explicitly here. I don't believe so. It's a commitment they're making. I think they're also going to be. Um, submitting a formal response letter back to Green Latinos. We will be getting a draft tomorrow morning. At the signing that we'll be able to bring back and distribute to the entire.
If, if we're okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
If if we're okay with the additional two weeks, put it in the letter and get credit for it. Got it?
Okay, so you wanna revise the letter?
Yes, but I don't need to see it again.
I don't need.
Need to see it again.
Make it.
Make it so.
Erica, Jamie, to use the legitimate signature.
Tomorrow morning, uh, Commissioner Malika, Commissioner Henson will be there for the official signing. I will be there for staff support.
Great.
Looking forward to it.
You have a good voice.
Yeah, I'll be able to project, so um, alright, good evening, Jeff Kloska, Director of Darren Spaceport. I have a Gislaine Shanhan here with me, our. P three owner, red band advisor, um. We just wanna provide you guys with a brief P three update, but before I do that, I just wanted to give you guys a quick couple general CASP updates, uh. Through the Center of Excellence that we've established with uh, DU. Um, they've started two projects, um, one of them is a feasibility study on the. Creation of a regional logistics hub to be centered. On CASP, you know, within Adams County, so they've begun that work as part of related to the overall P three work. And then the, the second project is, is outside of us, but also related. Is that they're assisting our restaurant, so Meteora, who's based at, at Darren Spaceport, they're assisting them with developing. A business plan and a marketing plan to help them grow and develop their business out there, you know, they're a, they're a small. Minority owned business, so their resources are fairly um, limited, so. You know, we, we, we thought that would be a great opportunity for the, to bring the, the weight of DU to, to, and to, to help them, you know, cause their. Their success is, is also our success, so. So that's what's going on with the Center of Excellence. Um, we have, we've also been accepted into the Customs and Border Protection. Uh, reimbursable services program. So over the next, um, I'm not sure how long it takes, we're gonna be meeting with them in the very near future, but we're gonna essentially have. The ability to have customs officers from other ports of entry, Denver, Centennial, Rocket Mountain Metro. Who will be able to come out to CASP to clear international general aviation aircraft, so. Um, that'll be a, a great capability that we'll, we'll be gaining over this next year. Um, something that we need to compete with the likes of Centennial and Rocket Mountain Metro as well. And it's, it's done through a reimbursable um, program, so. Customs charges us by the hour, we pass on that fee to the aircraft operator. That's how it's done at all the, all the airports where general aviation aircraft, you know, operate internationally. Uh, McCarr aviation, uh, they've, they've completed their soft opening, so they began, they got their aircraft delivered to CASP. They finished out their facility and they started flight training. Out of, out of the facility there. The grand opening is November seventeenth from twelve noon to two P M, so. Um, yeah, I'm working with uh, uh, the B O C C admin folks to ensure it's on your guys' calendars for anyone who can attend. Um, they would love it if, if someone could speak on behalf of the board, so, so that request is also um, coming as well.
Hi, Tim Lin. Do you have capacity to go?
Is this a big air?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already on my calendar.
It's pretty good, pretty good.
You were looking at us like we were gonna say something, I was like.
No, no.
We have something to that?
Absolutely. Um, Boom Supersonic has, uh, they've submitted their design plans and they're currently going through the permitting process with C E D. So we're hoping um, within the next, uh. You know, probably a month or two here that will have, that will be able to give them, you know, notice to begin their improvements on their, their location and wanna. Start their engine testing and development, you know, Q one of uh, twenty twenty-six, so. Um, things are looking good for that. Jenny's team and Brian's team is, is working on that. So just some general updates and now I'll bring us back to the, to the whole point of while we're here, that's just to do a, a P three update for you guys. Um, so tomorrow we'll be meeting with uh, us, Altitude X and the local uh, FAA Airport District Office team. Um, the main priorities with this, uh, with this meeting is to first introduce AltX to them, so they can put some names to faces. Um, really, uh, start to generally cover the overall, what's, you know, what's our vision, what's, what's AltX's vision for this? This P three. Um, and if, if time allows, we want, we wanna start getting into. Some of the major topics, some of the major guardrail items that's gonna, you know, uh. That we're essentially gonna utilize as we're negotiating this, this, this master development agreement, so. You know, uh, each, each FAA ADO uh, is different regionally, so the southeast may, you know, perceive. Some meta requirements different than, than the northwest, you know, so we. We wanna start testing the waters and get a general idea of where they'll land with, um. Specifically some of like the granisurance items, uh, things like disposal of property, fair equitable rate structures. You know, and um, you know, how, how some. Things in the past have been viewed as disposal of airport property as far as like crazy long term leases. You know, and then, you know, now there's been some agreements lately where it looks like the FAA may be softening a little bit on, on some of that stuff if the investment. Is, you know, high enough, so to speak, so. Uh, so we, we wanna see where ultimately we're, we're the rat with it, with that kind of stuff. Yeah.
The FAA is coming down on, on friendly e- leases.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Say the whole thing again about.
So hi- historically, you know, if an airport did like a ninety-nine year lease for a piece of airport property. The FAA would, would identify that as you're disposing of your, your property because it's such a long term agreement.
A de facto sale.
De facto sale, and, and now, and now there, there's been some situations where there's been a big enough investment.
I see what you're saying.
Where the, where the FAA is going, oh, okay, well, that, your investment mirrors what you're doing there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And um, let's see. So you know, thi- this is gonna be the first of a number of FAA meetings, you know, this is a, a, a first introductory one. As this M D A continues to evolve, you know, over, over the next year, that we will continue to have regular check-ins with the FAA. And um, you know, that, uh, these, I'm sorry, I, I just went ahead and talked a lot and uh.
You did great.
But if you feel free to, uh, fill.
I think the, the outcome of the meeting will be at the compliance agency. Uh, which is pretty typical for any federal compliance agency, right? It's the owner's responsibility to know the law. And to comply with the law, right? And so it's always in your best interest to get their input upfront to hopefully avoid, you know, misstepping anywhere. So as uh, Jeff said, getting the guardrails to understand. The commercial terms that can be negotiated within those guardrails is really the main point of the meeting. Wanting to make sure that as we begin those very detailed negotiations about. Length of term, types of fair market value that can be calculated for uh, compensation for the leases. Rights of refusal, options to um, have uh. Land that is available for the next development, if, if a developer wants to pay an option fee for that. Understanding what all of that, what that range is. Um, so that the county team then has a full suite of tools in its toolbox as we go into those negotiations on those commercial terms.
And so we'll be having this meeting and then their, their conceptual land use plan is also going to be provided to us, um. I believe November fifteenth is the. The deadline for that, so once we get that, we will, you know. Digest that, review that, and then we'll be coming back to this, um, to this board, you know, for, for a November update, um, you know, next month, so. Uh, you know, that's our, the next step.
Fantastic. Any questions?
No.
Um, I do have a couple of questions. So I don't think it's too early, we're at the end of October, especially with the holidays coming up, is. We have a national legislative um, conference for the National Association of Counties in February. I don't have the dates, and we usually go a few days early to go meet with our, either federal departments or our, our delegation. Um, is there anything top of mind that we should be looking at for? Yeah, to lobby on, whether it's our delegation or whether we wanna try to meet with the FAA, is there? If you wanna just think about it and.
Yeah, yeah.
Get with Jillian, um, so we can, you know, get some good use out of our time and get on calendars.
Yeah, definitely. What, what, yeah, let me go back and um, put some thought to that question and I'll get back to you with some uh, some potential items that we could, you know. Bring, bring to them, cause I, I want them to be m- meaningful asks, you know, absolutely, so, um.
I think, I think.
Introduction meeting would be even great, cause I don't think we met this new commercial team or are they all in place?
So they, they've just appointed a new, um, is it a director of airports for the FAA? He's new. I don't think the commercial space office has a.
Has an each of.
Yeah, so that, that position is still acting.
Okay, great.
I think that's a great question. I think we should talk to Dion. Um, because we have like appointed her as our strategic lead on some of this stuff, so. It's a good question. I think if you can identify some stuff and then if we hear them, I would think it makes sense. And it might be that they join us for something if there's a strategic reason to join us for maybe like an agency meeting or something else.
I think listening also will be great, and, and what I mean by that is. Asking questions where they will speak and you can listen, is that there are a number of new initiatives and programs coming out of the new administration. Um, that are just starting to kind of, you know, get a little bit of daylight. And we're still reviewing some of those programs to determine would they have applicability here. So I think there's a lot of opportunity in that type of venue to be able to ask a lot of questions. You know, what are you, what are you thinking about? What programs are you considering to provide input?
And, and, and that trip, we always have, and the other trips, we always have other things. But if we're trying to model, remember we kinda gave some feedback to our team to say, hey, to our friends at Altitude X, let's do these things together. Let's model it, bring them along on some of this stuff, and then we're showing that we are doing it together on at least a couple of.
Yeah, yeah, cause it was discussions like that we've had with Altitude X, with, with like the uh. The repatriating of, of M R O activities, you know, maintenance and repair operations for large aircraft. You know, that, that's the type of stuff that you wanna bring to the D C office, you know, the A D O guys, the, the local guys aren't gonna care about that. The national FAA guys, that's the stuff that they are, are more interested in hearing and. You know, in the future, if, if we do want to extend and lengthen and strengthen our, our north south runway to accommodate that. It's most likely, i- there's gonna have to be some political maneuvering to, to get the funds. From FAA, you know, via, you know, discretionary funding or congressionally directed spending, you know, to, to do a project like that, cause. Most likely working directly through FAA isn't gonna be as fruitful as going to political route or something like that, unless we have. Unless we can demonstrate like a, you know, Amazon or someone is like committing, yes, we will absolutely come there, you know, if you have this stuff, you know.
Okay. Um, is the conceptual land plan on the fifteenth, is that study session? What form would that be in? An executive session?
So, so they're gonna submit that to us?
That's the deadline.
That's the deadline for them to submit it to us. Yeah, yeah.
Can I have a question about that? So is that plan gonna be based on this meeting tomorrow, or you figure? Parameters of what's possible or, or what's preferred in business development on the?
It can have some flavors from the meeting tomorrow for sure, as far as if, if they hear something from the FAA, if we both hear something that may just. A land use thing that may just cause a little, an adjustment, you know, so, so there's a potential. Probably not a massive shift, but it could adjust it for sure.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what I was asking.
Commercial terms, right, is tomorrow's meeting? And the land use plan would be more uh, centered around the type of facilities and, and tenants that. That they feel are a good fit, how it gets laid out on the, the, the map and the various modules that you've seen, it's that type of. That type of document versus the specifics of the commercial terms.
Yeah, no, 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 it wouldn't have terms, I just wasn't sure, cause it just seemed like a tight, yeah. Tomorrow, and their plan is due on the fifteenth. Obviously, they've been doing work on it already. I was just kinda curious how much impact you thought it would have.
And they'll be back in November to outline that for y'all too. But then I imagine in January, when we regroup again, that we'll have a much more.
Yeah.
Discussion at that point after everyone's been able to review it.
That's where we wanna make sure that the counties, you've heard us say before that we wanna make sure goals, values and objectives of the county in any of. Your developments, right, in the county, that those are incorporated. In other words, that, you know, this is something that represents the county's values long term. And that should all be reflected in the land use plan.
And, and then our, our plan for November is to do an executive session with you guys. Individually, just, just us to talk about other results, kinda what came from this FAA meeting. And then the following day, we will have a, a P three update with Altitude X, uh, to do a general.
I'm sorry, when is that gonna be?
Uh, November eighteenth will be the exact session, the nineteenth will be the public, the actual study session.
Thank you. Okay, so the deadlines, the fifteenth and nineteenth is? The presentation discussion.
And, and, and that'll be, that'll be more of a general P three update, that won't focus a whole lot on the conceptual land use plan, cause we, we'll have only gotten it. A couple of days, you know, prior, so the main, that main uh, conceptual land use update will, will occur in January. Um, you know, so that we can digest it and give you guys some meaningful um, input on it.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
A little bit of horror, what are they doing?
Our chief deputy DA Jess Redman is here to talk with you all about. Some positions for the district attorney.
The first words out of his mouth is, well, after the sheriff gets this.
So. Bring an entourage, it's just me.
What do you got?
Uh, Jess Redman from the district attorney's office, thanks for having me, I submitted a a memo in support of the requests. Uh, I think uh way back when, along with our original proposed twenty twenty six budget, uh and then just recently. Karen Schweis uh from our office sent uh essentially a copy of that back uh through y'all, the request is. Uh, really for four positions that are uh from outside funding sources and those are distinguished. Uh separately, one is a full time position that is an ongoing funding basis and that's crime through crime victims compensation, this is a federal. Grant that we receive annually through a state statute that appropriates uh uh a value which is not consistent over the years. It varies over the years depending on obviously uh the crime that you have and the number of claims that you made for crime victims compensation. Uh, CBC is the acronym, CBC uh is uh set out through statute to cover medical expenses, funeral expenses. Uh, doors, locks, locks, windows, those sorts of replacements. Uh, last year, I believe, our claims amounted to uh two and a half million. Uh, the statute, the state statute in twenty twenty five, I think, effective July. Was to expand the administrative portion that's available to district attorney's offices uh throughout the state. To uh a total of uh not more than twenty percent of the total claims received. Uh, so eh what we've done over the years uh for historical purposes is uh funded an administrative. Uh, professional to process these claims, this is a a a giant volume of work uh. As you can, I'm sure, tell by the numbers, um and and the statewide because of. Uh, decreased contributions from federal and state funding for victim services. Uh, there's been a a push to increase the administrative apportionment that DA's offices can use. For purposes of processing the claims, so that's the first uh the request that was designated as a full time employee simply because. This is an ongoing um perpetual basis, CBC, the federal funding uh comes to us annually. The other three are from outside um uh sources as well, uh and. One of those. Two of those are are from a similar funding source and are associated with the same project. Uh, those I I title are are number three and four, the second is uh again, eh an ongoing or what we've. Experienced is an ongoing project and that's the sexual assault response team. That funding uh is available through uh a a a combination of sources. Uh, through our local veil victim assistance law enforcement fund, which is uh comes from costs associated with criminal cases. Uh, there's a small apportionment uh contributes to this uh particular, the SART position, it's a SART coordinator. Um, the other sources of funding are federal fundings, VOKA and OVW, these are uh victim assistance programs.
You got some VOKA?
Through, the the SART program receives uh VOKA funding.
And that's still going?
Yeah, eh with the, the expectation was to decrease by thirty percent.
Okay.
Um, and I laid out the the number, I can tell you, I just confirmed Brighton uh police department has. Uh, facilitated this particular grant program and project for the the last, I think, five or six years. And uh so Brighton has. Submitted these applications, uh. VOKA was, uh, total funding was thirty eight thousand.
Okay.
Um. Uh, OVW. Um, is another federal funding source was sixteen thousand and our local veil funding was fifty four thousand. That's what the 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 requests were, were a total of a hundred and nine thousand to fund this coordinator, the coordinator's role is really. Uh, one in which is commonly defined, a coordinator with law enforcement. And the district attorney's office that really is appropriately situated at the DA's office. Uh, for obvious reasons, but to coordinate all of our law enforcement partners for the investigation of sex assaults. How we've used this position in the past is really a um. Forgive the comparison, but a postmortem review, uh to really assess what are we doing and how are we doing? Uh, and it's really been effective, particularly in my experience through trial. To see how we're best serving victims on one side, but also how we tell them the story and treating victims through the other side and. Uh, I don't need to tell you all um about uh how we've evolved over time, we, law enforcement and. Uh, I think uh government programs to address um victim experience and the coordinator position. Really has suffered, uh, I think, being placed in a law enforcement agency, I think it's appropriately situated with DA's office. Um, and there are reasons historically that aren't um important here, uh but I think to take that back over here. All that would essentially mean is office space uh for us, everything else is laid out um in the in the funding request. Uh, yes.
Um, you're bringing your own money? This is a good job. I support. She's the come with her own funding.
I guess my question is, is is the county putting any money towards these positions? One hundred percent fully funded, so no benefits, no anything that the county is providing.
So what, uh, there is um, the the math. Matched up to being, I think it was thirty eight, thirty four thousand, what we calculate is um an unfunded balance of thirty four thousand.
Or employees.
Excuse me?
For all core employees?
Yes, ma'am, not each. Yes, ma'am, yes, uh for the total.
Total, we're we're good either way.
In the conclusion portion.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm good.
But but then one question has, you wanna move that one position from where to where? To you, from where?
Um, well, so right now, the funding, uh. Brighton uh police department has submitted all the applications to VOKA, to Vale and to OVW, they've all been approved. The person physically would move to our office, my understanding is, well, we have. A vacant office in our in in our facility, but my understanding is all of the operational has has already been built in to that person. So it's simply just moving, physically moving that person over to.
I'd wanted to make sure is that we weren't approving you.
No.
To take a person from somewhere else without them approving it.
This is not an existing vacancy in our office, um, this is simply moving a an individual who's. Currently working with Brighton Police Department and then they move over to our office and we would take over the grant.
Brighton knows this and is okay with this.
Brighton has requested for the last several years that we take this.
And just, the only thing to keep in mind is, yeah, I totally support this thirty six thousand or whatever, just keep in mind that later. Project funded. Grant funded, FTEs quite often come back with requests.
Did you say we get this funding annually?
So we have received it, the SART position has existed. I think for about ten years, um but it's a, it's an annual uh grant application process, yes.
So when we, if we don't get the grant, then we need to decide if we're gonna continue to fund those positions.
Yes, and it's on a calendar of funded basis, so it expires in the end of twenty twenty six, the uh opportunity. I think uh the grant funding opportunity closes, I believe, July or June, sometime around there. That's the general uh process that we would know going into the fall and the person that's currently in that position is well aware of the circumstances.
Okay. And does this money come out of general fund?
The thirty four thousand?
Yeah.
It would um be part of the DA's office general. Budget and they are able to absorb this amount.
Oh, okay, great.
Easy.
All right.
It just keeps getting better.
I know, just uh swede with all those great checks.
You're half of it.
You're good, you, no, you win.
Get out when it's going. Ben, did you win?
Need the room, run.
Run, don't walk.
Honestly, like if like.
Your boss is a long talker, take the win and go.
I think they really did give you the okay for all of them, yes, yeah, I support, thank you very much.
You, let me tell you this, you've done a great job, you've come to us when you absolutely feel like you need something. And then today you came with it, with money, I mean, like.
That's what you're saying, now, Lee, get out of here.
Uh huh.
You only go down from here. Good job, seriously.
It's a privilege, thanks very much.
You make it easy when you bring.
Far. Um, we have. The grant policies, you know, you approved in beginning of September and so we've been working with the departments. Um, to start getting everything together in East Civis, which is our grant management system. Um, we did a webinar uh two weeks ago to start the training process as well, we have another webinar next week. And or the week after next, November fifth. Um, and I'm starting to reach out and work one on one with different departments to make sure that we get all their information on what they're currently have with grants. Either pending or active into East Civis. Um, so what I've been doing is on Mondays, I take the reports out of there and. Populate the smart sheet dashboard so that you can see what is happening, um, so it's here for you to view. The only caveat is know that it's not a hundred percent yet because we're still working with each department to get their data in there. So this isn't a full picture yet, um, on the first dashboard, which is pre award. It walks through all the different steps, so in East Civis, the first step is to put the grant under consideration. We're looking at this, what that does is help us know if more than one department has put a grant under consideration or in prep. It sends an email to those folks and says, hey, more than one of you is thinking about applying to this, maybe you should talk. Right, and so they can have a conversation, if we're allowed to put in more than one grant app, great. If we're only allowed to put in one, it alerts us so that we can have that conversation and figure out what projects going forward. Um, so it gives you the general information here on under consideration. If they said, yes, we're absolutely gonna submit, they change it to it's in preparation. So you can see what folks are working on here, um, that they have logged currently. And then once it's submitted, it changes again, you can see what they requested and these are the ones that are pending. So we know what we're waiting on to find out. If at one step they said, um, I'm gonna skip down here a little bit, they said, well, we we looked at this grant, but we're not going to apply. We have a, the ability for them to put in a reason for why they abandoned it, so we can say, yes, we looked at it. Maybe we're not doing it because City of Thornton is doing it and we're going in with them or. It's only for left handed uh folks from. Ohio or something, it doesn't apply, you can put that reason in there, um, so we know we've looked at it and why. We've also created a place for grants with partners on the pre award side. So what we heard from some of our departments, especially ones like Public Works, is that they're a part of a lot of grants where they may not be the lead applicant. So maybe Thornton or Commerce City or someone else is putting in the grant and we're a part of it, we may be committing some matching funds, so we wanted to capture those. Um, but someone else, another agency is taking the lead, so you'll see those populating under grants with partners. So that's the whole pre award, waiting to find out if we've been awarded or not, any questions on that? Yes.
Not really a question, but I love this, I feel like we needed this the entire time I've been here and so I'm super excited to see this. Like, visualize because you're right, sometimes there's like a public health. Like, slant on it, but community economic development could also, or park rangers and sort of like. Whoever pulls that application or feels inspired can see what other department might also be applying. Just for confirmation, now that I've said this out loud, this, oh, you've got public health in here, but it covers the other elected officials, right? As well?
Yes.
Great. I'm good.
Um, as we work with them to put their data in.
This is pretty cool, I like it. And then there's there's some sort of like gladiator situation for when two departments want it or like it just comes to the CMO or something like that.
So there's the um centralized grants committee, which is a representative of the department, our legal team, our finance team, Spark. Um, and so. That group would come together and kind of provide guidance.
But yes, ultimately Dion would decide if there were two fighting departments.
And and that's why.
Only you don't have fighting come out of this.
Yes.
Got it.
We've had it.
Out this process that that happens.
Before we found out later.
Also good.
Steve.
Real quick.
Did she finish the presentation? You have one more dashboard.
Just just to confirm, this is not on, this is only internal, right? And then the other thing is like if, eh what helps us is like if we have access to it, then we can quit bugging the hell out of you by you have getting five or four of us forwarding on it. Hey, what about this grant? Then we can actually look at it, but when you click on it, does it take you to the information page of the grant so you could learn more about it?
Currently, no. That will come, I'll probably be back after the first of the year and the dashboard will be look, look different, it'll be in a platform called Amplifund. Which is what we're moving to.
Okay.
Once we get into Amplifund, yes, you'll be able to click on special highway committee off system bridge program. And it will give you an information page on that, right now, um, there's some limitations with East Civis, which is. Why we're migrating to Amplifund, so I have to take the report out of East Civis and put it in the smart sheet so you can see it.
I like that and then they, and it also, that example you have at the bottom, the reason why, like, if I were to come out there and I'm like. I have some like nonprofit or a bunch of folks, this is what happens, we get political pressure, why aren't you guys doing this? And that was the answer, we'd be still sending you an email, so. That's just, it's an example, I know, so thank you.
Yeah, I, it'll be more specific than just we decided not to open it, it's, we're doing it because our partner is or we didn't qualify. Or just one or two sentences.
You'd say mean county attorney, fine, as long as we understand.
Not agree to certifications.
Yeah, that I was just saying so we can understand it cuz I don't wanna have to generate another email like. Well, I know it's denied because you put it into that red zone. Thank you.
So then when we move to the awards, yay, money in, right, we've got, the dashboard starts out with. A couple real simple graphs, we can add more information and like I said, once we get to Amplifund, you have a lot more flexibility. Right now, it gives you a pie chart of, these are just the grants that we have recorded in East Civis, so again, not. Not a hundred percent, but you can see federal state foundation breakdown and you can see. not a hundred percent, but you can see federal, state, foundation breakdown, and you can see grant awards by department for the ones that are logged. Um, you know, parks, we're gonna clean up their data, so they have grants, but right now it's not showing. And then as you scroll down, um there's thirty-two grants that are recorded right now for sixteen point two million. And as you go through this, you can see by each department which ones they have that are active. And then when they close that grant out, it's gonna drop off this report. So, this report is gonna show you just the ones that are open. And at the bottom, there'll be that Grants With Partners. So, this'll be grants we're doing with another agency. And the ma- and it'll show you who the partners are. Like, this is an example one. I'm not sh- I think this is just a fake one I put in to have a uh example that, you know, you see it's with Thornton and CDOT. It's for the hundred and fourth right away, and we would fill that in so you can see those as well.
Very cool.
And everyone will get the link?
Yeah, they'll all have the links with you and um they'll be live. And then when we switch over to Amplifund, you'll get the new ones.
And then, moving forward, all grant questions now go to Daniela.
We have a email, uh grants@
It's not my name. She's saying it's not my name. Do not use my name. It's a different email.
Uh, you can email me, but you can e- you can email grants@cogup.org. And I think what we can do is put the email link there, and then um someone on our team will get it.
I do feel bad for ELT as we get, oh, look at this grant. And then they get five emails. We're like, oh, look at this grant.
Did you ever think about this?
We do. Susan does share uh bi-weekly a list of available grants with all of our departments. So, this does go.
Doesn't hurt. I mean, you know.
Yeah, but if if you send it to the grants at email, then we'll see it right away. Add it to the email I send out every other week if no one's looking at it.
There's a, there's a few reasons I like that. First of all, like we're not dependent upon somebody leaving, you know, like whoever's in charge of it has ownership of that grant's email account, and you have history and it's easy for us. We're not like, oh, no, now you gotta send it to this person. I get, so I like, I like everything that you discussed today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Daniela, do you wanna stay?